Good evening, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and open tonight's planning board regular meeting for October 29th, 2025. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I have some amendments. Brandy, am I allowed to do those amendments now?
Yes.
Okay.
So you've got to determine the determination.
All right. I'd like to go ahead and determine a quorum for all those present. Please state your name.
Pallavi Khadare.
Tetozer.
Deepa Lema.
Dan Ferris.
Sandy Summerlin.
Tretta.
Thank you so much. We do have a quorum present. To open up tonight's agenda, we do have some amendments. I'd like to go ahead and amend the tonight's agenda, going to item G, new business. Item four, enhancing planning board deliberation and recommendations. Our speaker this evening is unavailable, so we'd like to go ahead and remove that from the docket, please. With that, I'd also like to go ahead and in accordance with our Robert's, our adopted rules of order, Robert's Rules of Order, I apologize, and like to go ahead and move nominations of an elected chair and vice chair to item three. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
No.
All right. That is the last I have as well. If there is none additional, can I get in a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a quick show of hands, please, for all those in favor? Thank you. With that, I'd like to go ahead and... Item D? Do I need to do item D for inquiries?
Just to ask if anybody has any conflicts first.
Does anybody have any conflicts of interest per General State Statute 160D 109 to any of the items on tonight's agenda? I do not. And seeing no one else, I'd like to go ahead and move forward to item E for approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of July 15th, 2025. Does anybody have any amendments? Seeing no one rise to amend, I'd like to go ahead and recommend a motion to approve the planning board regular meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025. All those in favor with show of hands, please?
Aye.
Thank you.
Who made the motion for that one? Did anybody make it through?
I didn't.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay. With that, I'd like to go ahead and move past item F, being the old business, to G, and it will be formerly G1, consideration for proposed text amendment, TA 0202025, native plants requirement, tree preservation clarification, and tree species list update. James, sorry, Madison Miller is our presenter this evening.
I'll say I'm better than James, but don't let him know that. Good evening, everyone. I am Madison Miller, the Assistant Planning Director for the town. It's a pleasure to be before you all tonight to bring forward this text amendment to our land development code. So this petition is amending several chapters of chap, or several sections of chapter eight. It's going to be amending section 8.3, 8.10, and 8.14. And so this amendment is adding a native and diverse planting requirement for all new developments. It is clarifying some pre-tree preservation standards, and then also we are removing the tree species lists from our ordinance so we can administer that on our own administratively so we can make updates to it freely within coordination with us and our Union County Urban Forester. So highlighted in green are all of the requested changes. So I have highlighted in the first section the substantial change here. So for all new developments, at least 75% of the plantings used for either tree planting, street trees, lot trees, buffer plantings, those shall now consist of native plants. So that is species of trees that are native to our region, and so those are typically more acclimated to our climate, to our wildlife, and are more resistant to disease. So while also adding a native plant requirement, we are also adding a requirement for species diversification. So with this chart, if there's a certain number of shrubs or trees, we're now requiring a certain number of species to be planted. So, for example, a neighborhood might have one type of street, street tree species planted, and so what could potentially happen? Those could fall victim to a disease, either if it's all oaks, could be oak wilt, could be the ash trees, the ash borer could be more susceptible to them. So what this is doing is planting a number of diverse species to ensure that they're more adaptable and resilient to those pressures of disease and more resilient.
Madison, I have one question.
Yeah.
If you don't mind me jumping in here, speaking of diversity of our preservation, part of this reminds me of one of the projects that, looking back across the street from Adelena, or actually, it is Adelena.
Adelena, yes.
Yes.
So one of your conditions was to ensure that some of the BMP plantings were native and diverse to ensure that they're attractive to pollinators and wildlife.
Right.
Correct, especially, you know, those BMPs were, on that project, they were sourced more for the site and less more for essentially preservation use.
Yeah.
And so they were kind of isolated by themselves. Could they essentially be repurposed in that manner to reprovide some habitat?
Sure.
Are we, is, one of the things in looking through that, we didn't talk about essentially is this encompassing in those areas as well, in those disturbed areas, do they have to go back? Will they, will there be any requirements? Because I didn't quite see any of that language here in that, within this requested change.
Yeah, so, so that, on this slide here, it talks about if tree save requirement doesn't meet certain standards, so, or if they're required to replant. So the overall change to here for the native plant requirement is for our entire chapter eight landscaping, tree preservation. So this would apply to those areas for replanting. For example, if they're replanting some slopes or they're replanting around the stormwater ponds, this would be the new standard. So if they're replanting anything, 75% of those, and for the entire development must be those native species.
One of the projects that I could think of is Emerson Park. One of the conditions that that site was, even though that they were going to still clear cut and take down historic oaks, one of the conditions was for an acre to be replanted after clear cutting. Are they going to be required to do native species?
To do the native species.
To replant Emerson Park's one acre that was recovered?
Yeah, so this wouldn't apply to that development, but I can talk about that more specifically because they are replanting 11-plus acres of their development, and so in coordination with us and our urban forester, he had a list of species specific for those replanting that we've been using as kind of a standard for development. So those included the oaks, included maples, included magnolias, included a wide variety to ensure that they're replanted with a various number of species. And so that really also leads into this too, to where, you know, we had if tree save requirement doesn't meet the bare minimum, it just, our ordinance originally just said additional trees must be planted. And so we didn't have anything specific to call out to say, hey, these are the number of trees that you need to replant. So that's kind of what we've done here. For example, if there's another Emerson Park, well, we can point to a specific requirement saying, hey, now you have to replant this area with one-to-two-inch caliber trees, they must be medium to large maturing, and they must be spaced 10 to 12 feet apart. So this is a standard that, you know, as a planner, we copy and paste from other jurisdictions, but this is directly from our urban forester, and this is what we're using for the reestablishment of a hardwood forest. So this is where this kind of requirement comes from. So this would have been handy to have, but I will say Emerson Park is doing this exactly. They're planting, they're doing 76 trees per acre at one-inch caliper, because by the time the trees grow and mature, they will have surpassed planting a two-inch, three-inch, or four-inch caliber tree. So starting them young, watering them for the first season, they will surpass a larger tree if they would have planted it. So that's where this kind of requirement, or this new requirement comes in, because it adds specifics, and so there's no questions about replanting a tree save areas, because this is very specific on what they have to do and what they have to meet.
I know that was one of my concerns about Emerson Park was very much in that tree preservation ambiguity.
Yeah.
And essentially, it was very loose on what they would commit to in those details, especially when it was site-specific.
Yeah. Yeah, so this tree planting here, the one-to-two-inch caliper at 10 to 12 feet in spacing, is what they use to quantify replanting of a forest. Typically, it's about 36 to 40 trees per acre if you're wanting to replant in a park-like setting, but this is more specific to, hey, this isn't going to be a park, this is going to be reestablished as a future tree canopy.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And then the, the last section of this, and we had, we had this recommendation from our urban forester probably two cycles ago, from the board, from one of our board retreats, he recommended that we pull our tree species list from our ordinance, so this makes it easier for staff to update on the day-to-day, keep it updated weekly, and have it as another tool or resource for the development community when they're looking for tree species selection. But in addition to this, North Carolina State Extension has a great resource and a great database of trees, so we wanted to use that as also an option for the development community for new development. So they can use our tree species list that will now pull out of the land development code and have maintained administratively, but then also will have the direction to go to the NC State Extension Database of Trees, because you can filter it through size and placement, and if it's native or non-native, it's already a great resource that we should be using more of.
One question. What does this do to us? As Millbridge, we all know that some of the trees have not made it. The planter area wasn't correct, and there's essentially history there. Are we essentially having to replace those trees with essentially the conforming trees in the future at a higher cost? Or would we just be replacing like-for-like to keep likeness of what's already established in Millbridge?
Yeah.
I'm just curious about a cost question there, because if we do with the historic trees, which I actually very much support, do we need to essentially, longer term, think, will that ordinance apply in a Millbridge if a tree dies? Do we need to do essentially a conforming tree?
Yeah, so, so for Millbridge specifically, a great example, either the tree was just planted improperly after the development, developer's left, so the, our Public Services Department has come out and they maintain, or they were maintaining the street trees. So they were either substituting it for a like-species tree, or what they could ever, what they could find commercially. So this wouldn't necessarily impact that. This is more for new development that comes in if we get another rezoning request, conditional rezoning request, or for a new project that submits construction documents. Yeah, okay.
So this is part of, this is part of a larger policy issue that we're having to address. Everybody loves the trees, nobody wants to get rid of any of them, but we've got a major maintenance issue over there, as the board identified back in July. There's some loose ends that need to be cleared up with that, and we do have, as you mentioned, there's several trees, the wrong species were placed in the wrong areas, they're placed too close together. I think our new ordinance now addresses a lot of that. There probably will be some going back through, there could be some thinning of those, depending on what species or where. We're going to have to work with the HOAs, we want everybody to be happy about it, but also keep the potential cost savings and the maintenance in mind later on. So this is part of that. We will be coming back there with some more recommendations afterwards.
And I'll say, one of my favorite streets in Waxaw, if you go through Curriton or the beginning part of Millbridge Parkway, Sunset Hill and Curriton, you see all these beautiful willow oaks, they have such a large canopy, and they, they're great until we're replacing $50,000 worth of sidewalk. So that is an example of an old standard, it was a three-foot planting strip, and hey, let's put a large maturing tree in it. And some of that in Millbridge too, they have the same issues in the Millbridge Parkway, maybe not the newer section yet.
The older phases, yes.
Older phases, yes. Again, old standard, three-foot planting strip, let's put the largest tree we can think of in it.
Very close together.
Yeah, very close together. So we're working on that with our Public Services Department to focus on the maintenance to where it's easier to maintain in the future, and then the tree is allowed to live its long life without any intervention from, from us, either replacing sidewalk or eventually having to remove the tree.
And the plan is in place, or you're still identifying?
Yeah, so some of the stuff we've already corrected from some time ago, right? So we'd no longer do three-foot planting strips, we do seven-foot planting strips. We're now potentially looking at doing something even larger than seven feet, just to ensure that there's adequate space, because, because yeah, even sometimes seven foot over time, that could potentially be too small, but working at that, looking at species specific for street trees, and again, with us pulling our tree lists out, that could be a resource, not only for the development community, but for our Public Services Department if they're coming through and replacing a street tree if they need to. But ordinance-specific stuff here in the LDC is for new development, but doesn't mean it can't be used for more than one thing.
It can still be an all-encompassing guideline, but this is more tailored towards our future new processes, new streets, new easements.
Yeah.
Which I do agree with you, the seven foot isn't quite enough, but that's for a future debate.
Yeah, we're having internally a long discussion about this, about what does it look like for some of these street trees, maybe planting them 40 feet apart, maybe that's too close, maybe we push it closer to the 65-foot range. So we're, that's an ongoing conversation with us Public Service Department for long-term maintenance as well.
And engineering.
And engineering, yes.
Yeah, we've got to include the engineers.
I agree, and larger, we said, can we do eight-foot, can we do nine-foot planting wells, you know? That means we have to bump out our rideaway as well, increase the rideaway by a foot or two, so we've got to consider that. So those are things we're working through with this, and once we get the new standards in place, whatever those are, we will be doing some retrofitting afterwards.
Got it.
Perfect. Thank you, both of you.
Yep.
Madison, one more question I had, you know, you mentioned four, but kind of about cut and pasting to some degree, is this kind of patterned after what other communities are doing in the area that have had the same kind of growth issues and trying to deal with it? Is this kind of a, kind of a, kind of us catching up with what other people kind of implemented?
Yeah, so from what I've seen, not a lot of communities in North Carolina have done this specifically. This came from Chatham County, because they were really focusing on tree species for birds and pollinators, and so doing research, there's not a whole lot of that in North Carolina specifically. And so that's why we wanted to kind of push more this way, just to make sure that, because tree canopy in Union County is kind of a hot topic sometimes with the growth pressures from other regions, and so this is really a step to ensure that, you know, when trees go back, that they're suitable for this climate, suitable for, for this built environment. So that's kind of what we're pushing towards. So that's really, dangerous question, no, not really, but hopefully we're taking a step in the right direction.
Well, it sounds like a lot of the communities are going to have to be dealing with this, I would assume, relatively quickly with that.
Yeah, I mean, as diseases for trees become more prominent, and as certain species aren't doing well, I think most municipalities are going to have to pivot, and a lot of other regions are facing it with, because back in the day, they planted one tree species through their entire city, and now they're being more susceptible to disease. So, so planning staff recommendation, upon the adoption of our land development code and overseeing its implementation, the planning department proposes these updates to our planting standards with addition, additional clarification on developments that do not meet the tree save standards, and then further adapting tree species list by removing it from our code to allow greater administrative oversight and its day-to-day updating. So planning staff recommends the adoption of this text amendment as presented. And then I have before you the reasonableness and consistency statement, and then requested action for tonight. And if there are any additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
I'd like to go ahead and open it up for any additional questions at this time from my fellow board members. With that said, I do think that tonight's action would be reasonable, and I'd like to go ahead and get a motion in the affirmative, please. Would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do I need to kind of read the whole reasonability statement?
Yes, please.
Okay. I can make a motion to, to, that the text amendment is requested, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals for the town of Waxaw, and is reasonable and in the public interest, as the text amendment provides needed updates to the land development code that strengthens the planting requirements, clarifies planting specifics for meeting the tree preservation standards, and allows administrative review of the town's tree species list. And I make a resolution to accept the text amendment.
Thank you, Tretta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Unanimous.
Perfect.
Madison.
On to the next one.
Ready when you are, sir.
All right, the second petition before you guys tonight, petition TA 021-2025, is a request by your own planning department and the town attorney to amend various sections of chapter two and chapter three as it relates to the special use permit process. The current process allows for hearsay and could erode the impartiality as the planning board recommendation is reviewed by the Board of Commissioners. In addition, this request also updates language in section 3.4.2 to be in line with North Carolina General Statute 160D 406J. So you're not going to see a whole lot of red text here. This is the chapter two modification. This is in our land development code where it outlines kind of the role of the planning board, so it's one of those roles right now that involves making a decision on special use permits. And so I guess a special use permit doesn't come up very often. It is a process, a quasi-judicial process, that an applicant could use for certain things. So, for example, the most recent one we had a year or two ago, it was a existing business, they owned a dog groomery, they wanted to expand their business to do a kennel. In that zoning district, a kennel was not allowed by right, it was a S, which means it needs special approval. They either needed a conditional zoning or a special use permit. So since it didn't require a site plan, they went through a special use permit process. And so that is typically a quasi-judicial process where there is an evidentiary hearing held by a body, a governing body, and where they collect facts and hold the evidentiary hearing to, I guess, find the findings of facts to ensure that they could issue the permit. So that is an example. We typically steer developments to do the conditional rezoning instead of the special use permit, because it's, conditional zoning is legislative, so that's what allows interaction with developers, allows really that legislative process to where you can kind of work with and add conditions and have good conversation and dialogue. So that's why you guys don't typically see a lot of special use permits, but I just kind of wanted to clarify that. So striking it from the role of the planning board, and then the 2.3 is, talks about what the Board of Commissioner recommends based off of the planning board decision. based off of the Planning Board decision, so striking that as well. And so some of this is just removing the term "special use permit." So we have a table that outlines timeline and process for certain things. So here, we would just strike out the Planning Board Review for the figure 3.1.1. General Procedures just defines neighborhood meetings and when they're required. So we would remove special use permit from that as well, so you see the two strikeouts for it. The next slide, there's going to be a lot of red text. Don't be alarmed. It's just clarifying the process. So Section 3.4 Special Use Permit defines kind of the role and the process, review process for those. So what we're doing is we're removing the neighborhood meeting requirement, the Planning Board items as well. It defines what happens if they make action or don't make action, and then how they continue that. So the review process would be, application is received. If it includes a site plan, it must be received 90 days before going to the Board of Commissioners. If no site plan is required, it's just 30 days, must be received 30 days prior to the BOC meeting. And then it would be, Item B, former F, will now be the evidentiary hearing, where the Board will conduct the evidentiary hearing, giving people with standing the ability to appeal the decision. And so this is what is allowed by General Statute 160D.
Question?
Yeah.
One of the things that I know that we had done here while in the quasi-judicial setting, for, to keep some essentially variance, because there was a variance normally of the chair, and then there would be essentially a separate board. So one of the things that I know we had discussed internally on the Board is essentially the Chair and Vice Chair would essentially switch roles. So if it had become an essentially an evidentiary, it would be a fresh person if it had come through the Planning Board prior, so the Chair would not be presiding over the same essentially events. I know that's something I had talked to Lisa about in the past.
Yeah, I don't necessarily recall, or was that just for you guys wearing the hat as Board of Adjustment for variances?
Correct, because we were wearing two different boards between the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Boards. So essentially, the Vice Chair would become the Chair over a quasi-judicial setting. I don't know if, do we have?
You don't have to do that.
Okay.
I've been in other towns where it's been the same thing. What you really want to do is try to break your meeting up. Typically, staff.
Yes.
Needs a lot of support with you guys to make sure that you're aware of, okay, we're switching, we're putting on a hat now, now we're doing quasi-judicial.
Then how does that?
Certainly do that. I'm not familiar with that.
How does that work then with the BOC? Putting on two different hats essentially, and essentially separating the meet, or breaking the meetings?
So it'd still be the Board of Commissioner meeting. So I think they wear one hat. They are the legislative, but then also a quasi-judicial body, depending on what it is. You guys as Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, two roles, two hats. And if I'm wrong in that.
It's a hearing.
Yeah.
Right? It's a hearing. So you open a hearing.
Okay, you're just opening a separate hearing.
You're in a quasi-judicial hearing at that point. The procedure follows the path for whatever the hearing is on. In this instance, a special use permit. And all the formalities that have to flow, flow.
Okay.
They conclude that hearing, they make any determination that they're going to make. And if they need to continue the hearing, they go back into the Commissioners.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, in five years of me just being a member between both the Board of Adjustments and on the Planning Board, we've seen two. So that's why I'm asking. It's more for my educational purposes. So thank you for giving me a minute. It was a learning lesson.
Yeah.
It was a very, very, it was one of my very first meetings, and it was a learning lesson of operating. It was our, it was our very first, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're lucky to not have a whole lot of special use permits or variances. There are some jurisdictions where they have them monthly, and I couldn't even imagine. So we're lucky here with that.
Thank you. Thank you again for giving me a minute and walking me through the process.
Yep, and then the last change here, you'll see some, some two words added in green and two words removed in red. So this is really just changing it to align with the language that's actually in our 160D. Same concept, they're just making it correct. And then finally, another figure that we're updating, so with the special use permit process, this is just correcting it from what is in writing to what is in the graphics. So we're removing the neighborhood meeting and then the Planning Board Review. So this was, this was a little longer. So with the adoption of our Land Development Code and continuing to see its implementation, we propose these updates to the special use permit process to ensure it remains quasi-judicial in its entirety. The current process allows a Planning Board to offer a recommendation. That could be hearsay, since the BOC is the entity that holds the evidentiary hearing. There is a risk that even a Planning Board discussion could erode the impartiality of the BOC, who listens to or reviews a recommendation prior to that quasi-judicial hearing. It is much cleaner to avoid even the appearance of bias or partiality to not have the Planning Board discuss or issue recommendations, so that the BOC is hearing and deciding on its own. It is also recommended that we remove the neighborhood meeting requirement, not to be a part of this process. Any public input would not, would need to be presented by the individuals in that hearing. And any standing determinations would need to be made as necessary for folks wanting to participate in that hearing. And then finally, changing those few words to be in line with NC General Statute 160D 406J.
Quick question. Part of the special, special hearing process would be essentially a written letter for those that would be afflicted parties, would it not be? And the process would remain in place?
As part of like the noticing?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it would be for those who are affected by, if it's a property, it would be those adjoining it, and then.
We updated the zone, the radius, this, just the beginning of this year, I believe, to 600 feet.
Yeah, that is only, that's for the neighborhood meeting. So this, that would not apply to this.
Is it still at 300 feet then, the minimum, state minimum?
I believe special use permit process is for those who are adjoining the property.
Adjoining only?
Similar to that of a general rezoning.
Okay.
It's typically either adjoining or within 100 feet sometimes.
Okay.
That's who can actually get across the street to those.
Yeah, we consider properties across the street adjoining, so we would send them notice.
Standing has to be a, there's an assumption there. It has to be a, it can impact everyone. It has to have a special level of impact on those property owners, typically that's who's going to be right next door. Unless they come in and they've got some other reasons that they can give you guys why they have more standing than others.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember. I knew that there was a notice, or essentially there are, that there could be an afflicted party, neighbors.
And signage, I believe, as well, we have to put out.
Correct. Yeah, we still have to put out the big Z sign in front of the property, and then the notices for those adjoining.
Thank you.
Yep, so then Planning Staff recommends the adoption of this text amendment as presented. And before you is the Reasonableness and Consistency Statement, and then Requested Action tonight. And then, again, if there are any additional questions, I am here.
I'd like to go ahead and open it up for any additional questions, but I think we've covered most of it.
I had two questions, and he just answered them.
Great. Did you really have two questions?
I did. I wrote them down.
Please, I'm sorry.
No, he literally just answered them.
Oh, nice. With that, if there is anything else? If not, I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to move forward with the Reasonable and Consistency Statement Staff has presented us.
I make a motion for a favorable recommendation for Petition TA-021-2025 as presented, based on the Reasonableness and Consistency Statement of, "The text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxall. It is reasonable and in public interest as the text amendment provides an update to the special use permit process to ensure the quasi-judicial proceedings remain free of hearsay impartiality."
Thank you so much. With all the, can I get a show of hands, with all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Moving on to the item that was formerly number one, now Item G3, nominations for elections of Chair and Vice Chair. I know staff, I'm going to ask staff and Brandy to assist us here a little bit to make sure that we stay within our guidance and compliance of our Robert Rules of Order based off of our procedures. I'll make sure that we give all members applicable time to make any statements or comments that may be necessary, so they can make fair and balanced judgments. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion to open the floor for nominations of Chair. Can I get a motion, please, to open it?
I'll make a motion to open up the minutes for discussion for nominations.
It is now open for nominations of Chair.
And nominate Deepa Lumine.
I'd like to go ahead and second that.
I would like to nominate Deepa Lumine.
We have a third. Believe that would cover it for me. With that, can I?
Yeah, if anybody has any like questions or anything, or discussion on that. And then if not, you guys can close the, you can make a motion to close the floor for those nominations. And then you can make, do the motion to vote on that.
Thank you, Brandy. I would like to go ahead, if anybody else has any comments. I'd like to just take a second. I would like to thank Deepa. I've been honored and blessed, and I'd like to actually just go ahead and thank the entire Board that I've been able to work with these past five years. It's been an honor to work with you guys. It's been an honor getting to know you guys as neighbors and essentially work together to help and benefit the town and its people here with its planning goals. It's been an honor to work with Deepa, and I greatly look forward to her as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Committee. With that, I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to close all nominations.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Brandy, can we vote on that, or do we need to go ahead and move to Vice Chair, and then we'll move to votes?
You can go ahead and vote on that, make a motion to, to appoint Deepa as Chair.
Awesome. I'd like to go ahead and vote on a motion of nomination of Deepa Lumine as Chair.
So moved.
Vote for myself, right?
Yes, please. Yes, vote for yourself. So moved. All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Wonderful. Deepa.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate this and look forward to work with everyone. And I would like to really thank Daniel for all, everything that he has done in the last five years, and especially the last three years as the Chair. It has been a great pleasure working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deepa. That means a lot to me. It's been an honor and a privilege. You guys entrusted me to represent you as Chair, and I just appreciate the privilege and honor, and thank you so much for entrusting that with me while I worked through and worked on your guys' behalf and the people's behalf here in the residents and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Deepa, would you like to finish off?
No, you can continue.
Okay. I will finish tonight's agenda. Deepa, thank you very much. Like to go ahead then and open up nominations for Vice Chair. Can I get a motion to open up voting for Vice Chair, please?
I'll make a motion.
Awesome. Vice Chair, nominations for Vice Chair is now open. I'd like to go ahead and lead off, and I'd like to nominate Trey Taylor, please, as Vice Chair.
I second that.
Awesome. With that, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Like to go ahead and make a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair, please.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Thank you, sir. With nominations closed for Vice Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to appoint Trey, Trey Taylor as Vice Chair of the Planning Board and Zoning Committee. Can I get a motion, please? So moved. For all those in favor of appointing Trey Taylor. Yeah, awesome, unanimous.
Appreciate the support. Look forward to serving the Board and the community, continuing to serve on the Board and the community.
Trey, I know that you also serve on the ABC Board, and I just got to say thank you so much for everything that you do for the town and the neighbors and residents as a volunteer. Greatly appreciate getting to work with you, and it's been an honor and privilege.
Ditto. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, all appointments, Brandy, are we good?
We're good.
Perfect. Then I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody.